Agenda item two, adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion, changes? Otherwise, those in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause nay. Agenda is presented as adopted. Item three, approval of minutes, regular meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Still moved.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Seconded. Are there any discussion, any errors, omissions, changes? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause nay. Hearing. Agenda item four, public remarks. Please use your, raise your hand if you're on Zoom. If you are to be recognized, or raise your hand and I will recognize you. Mr. Johnson. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Leonard Johnson, twenty-one long crossing road, tax abatements. I propose we put a moratorium on tax abatements. We don't know what the feds are gonna do. And so the state doesn't know what the state's gonna get, the town that doesn't know what the town's gonna get. We've got education people wanting a seven point three percent increase in their bu- 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 budget. And I just wonder, has anyone done a study on the effectiveness? Or the return to the town on developments that have tax abatements on it? It seems to me, it's like everyone else is paying somebody's taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sir, please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is David Price, thirty-five Spice Hill Drive, East Hampton. I'm here as Chair of the Sustainability Subcommittee for the East Hampton Clean Energy Task Force. I wanted to use this time to provide the council with a brief update on our activities and plans going forward. As a reminder, a resolution was passed by the Town Council in April of twenty twenty-four to focus attention and effort within East Hampton on matters of sustainability and to promote the town's local initiatives and actions towards sustainability. East Hampton is one of one hundred and thirty-five towns in Connecticut that participate in Sustainable CT. Sustainable CT offers resources, including advice, free of charge, and help with fundraising to help towns achieve their sustainable goals. You can learn more about Sustainable CT at sustainablect.org. So what is sustainability? Well, it can be lots of things. Some examples, things like watershed protection programs, energy use reduction for residential and municipal buildings, housing needs assessments, arts and cultural initiatives, inventory and assessment of historical resources, and so on. On their website, they have a full listing of all of the different categories that you can pursue for sustainability. Candidly, it can be a little overwhelming to think about all these areas of sustainability initiatives, where that can help our community, and where to focus our attention. Our first goal, however, is to recognize and document all the things that this town has done and plans to do that align with sustainability. We know that this Town Council and those that preceded you, as well as various boards and commissions in town, have already done and are doing many things in East Hampton to be more sustainable, a more sustainable community. We need to identify and document those accomplishments and initiatives. We started putting together a short list of what we thought would be good for the community, such as composting services, adding more EV charging stations in town, supporting our community garden, and so forth. However, while we may do those things, as I mentioned, we decided to take a different approach. And that approach is to get to know the various town committees and organizations better, to let them know that we exist, explain what our mission is, to listen to what their initiatives and goals are, so that we can align our sustainability goals with those of the community, and to offer our support in helping them achieve those goals. Over the past year, our sustainable team has been meeting regularly within ourselves and teams from other towns, including East Hattam. So, in the weeks and months ahead, we plan to meet with the various towns committees, boards, and organizations, introduce ourselves, document the accomplishments they've achieved, listen to their needs, and offer our assistance. We have a lot of work to do, and we welcome the support of the Town Council, which we believe we have, and we welcome anybody in the community who is interested in joining us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Russ?
Thank you. My name is Russ Kaplan. I live at one twenty-seven Comstock Trail, and I chair the East Hampton Clean Energy Task Force. Now, you have in front of you the remarks I'm speaking of right now. So, David Price just summarized the work being done by our sustainability team here in town. But I want to speak about something a little differently. Our Clean Energy Task Force is mounting its twenty twenty-five campaign to save our residents' money that is spent on energy here in our town. Let me say that slightly differently. While our task force has a clear mandate for seeking out clean energy wherever we can, and that's an important mandate, right now, our task force needs to help our citizens reduce what they spend on energy, especially in these times of these high prices that are stressing us all. Okay. We are currently seeking a grant to conduct the twenty twenty-five HeatSmart and Home Energy Solutions, which is also called an HES program. We've already been successful in securing for twenty twenty-five a small grant from the Rockfall Foundation to support this program. But the larger grant we are interested in is under the Energize Connecticut Community Partnership Initiative, and it will provide the bulk of what is needed for this program. And HeatSmart and Home Energy Solutions, to make it clear to folks who might not be familiar, make it possible to conduct low or no cost home energy audits. And audits lead to savings of many hundreds of dollars each year for every resident who takes advantage of the program. That's averages. Some are less, some are in the many hundreds of dollars. They can also open up less costly access to additional options, such as weather, let me try English, weatherization and insulation. And these programs are not new, but finding ways to get more of our residents to reap the benefits is something that we want to do an extra push this year. It's important. In the weeks ahead, we have a lot of work to do. The grant is not dependent on federal programs, which may or not be in place later this year. So we're not going after something that could disappear. And here's also a very important point, particularly for the Town Council. This grant requires no matching funds if we are successful. So we're not coming back to you saying, you know, in these budget times, we need it. So that's very important, and I want to emphasize that. But it will require help from our Town Council and support from our community right here. And it may require working together and support from neighboring towns. I have left with Dean Markham and with David Cox just a quick outline of what we need from the Town Council and the Town Manager, and it is not money-related. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public remarks? Eric? Long time.
Derek Johnson, thirty-six Lakewood Road in East Hampton. First off, I apologize for my dress. I was at the gym. I don't mean any disrespect by what I'm wearing tonight, so. My apologies in that regard. I wasn't aware that this matter was gonna be on the agenda until I was halfway through my workout. I noticed on, there's an agenda item with respect to tax abatements. The economic literature on the economic value of tax abatements are at best problematic in terms of the benefits to a town. At best problematic. More often than not, tax abatements, tax deferrals, in fact, have a negative economic impact on a community. And they are often a disguised form of a regressive tax. Because what is, in essence, is happening is that lower-income residents, okay, have a, at the margin, a higher tax obligation to the benefit of typically wealthier or higher-income businesspeople who are in fact investing in a community. But what is the literature clear about? What's clear about one thing is that, to the extent that a state or municipality is going to put in place tax abatements, it has to be ex ante. It has to be in such a way to incentivize economic activity that the town wants, that would not have otherwise occurred by that private party. That is to say that the economic activity, every business owner has a private rate of return that they expect. The only issue is, is the cost of capital, if you will, more or less than that rate of return. If it's less than the rate of return, then what you're doing is subsidizing economic activity that otherwise would have occurred. A gift. And so, with respect to projects that are already in development, you're subsidizing economic activity that would have taken place in any event. Additionally, you have to show that the town benefits from this. That is, the social and economic benefits of the development exceed whatever the private return is. And there's nothing really that the EDC has done that gives you that information. Was there ever an economic analysis as to the impact of this development on reducing home values with respect to the neighborhood adjacent to that? My guess is that this development has probably reduced home values with respect to the adjoining neighborhood. Was that ever done? I would ask that you either reject this application or push it off to another meeting to allow the EDC to respond to an appropriate economic questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to make public remarks at this time? Is there any hands raised? Kathy?
No.
No one wishes to make remarks at this time? Would move on. Agenda item five, presentations. You have no presentations. And item six, bids and contracts, review and possible action on amendment to Apex, formerly Environmental Partner Contract for Water Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item we have in front of you now is the Fourth Amendment to an agreement we have with Apex Engineering, which is formerly Environmental Partners, related to water engineering. You'll recall that last year, the council adopted the Second Amendment to this agreement that implemented one point five million dollars in round numbers of various engineering services to move us toward design, finalizing evaluation and design, beginning design of a water system. In the intervening timeframe, the Water Committee has continued to do its work and has proposed to evaluate some different water sources, additional water sources in the town of Portland, as I think I've commented on here in the past. The proposal that you have in front of you tonight is to reduce the funds associated with a particular task in the existing agreement and to add in the exact same amount funds to three new tasks that are related to evaluating those water sources, as I mentioned, and evaluating them for their use by the town. The reason we're able to reduce the expenses in the area that I mentioned, which is geotechnical services, basically evaluating the subsurface conditions in various locations around the town, is because we were fortunate that the Town's Wastewater Authority kept all of the data it created in the eighties when the town was undertaking its major sewer construction projects. So we have all of that data. We have the underground and the subsurface data and have provided that to the engineer, and it is sufficient for them in about two-thirds of the community. So we avoid a great deal of the expense that would have been undertaken in that regard. So, for purposes of this agreement, it is really nothing more than a shifting of dollars underneath the final total. It does not increase the final total, and it adds that new task, as I described earlier. So that's the proposal. It is a three hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred dollar shift in dollars. But again, no increase in the total cost of the agreement, which remains at one million four hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding? Inside them? Not?
I move to approve the change in the agreement.
Second.
There any, any discussion, any questions? Not, this is no new money, and this is just a transfer of balance within the grant.
And the money was government-funded money anyway.
Other than this government. Yes, it was funds from the state of Connecticut.
The things are going. This is the only government I'm beginning to trust.
I'm with you.
Hearing no further comments or questions? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause nay? Got the.
Thank you.
Agenda item seven, resolutions, ordinances, policies, proclamations.
We have none of those, you see.
Agenda item eight, continued business, subcommittee reports and updates. Do we have any subcommittee reports or updates?
Not at this time, from my side.
I have fire commission.
Go ahead.
For month of January, they did forty-four calls. And the man-hours accumulated were, for the first month of the year, nine hundred and twenty-five hours. To a great fire department. Thank you.
Welcome. Any further reports or? If not, we'll move on. Agenda item nine, A, discussion and confirmation of space planning for the proposed fire station.
So the item we have in front of you at this point is a draft document that has been created as we're trying to move ahead with consideration of whether whether the space at eleven Skinner works and how much it might cost the community if we were to acquire that and convert it into a fire station. I'll emphasize the fact that this is a draft document, and the purpose of the conversation tonight was to let the council see that and have a discussion about that that information and how you would want to see, or how you want to handle what I'll call the next steps. How you want to handle conversations with the fire department, with the architect. Ultimately, when this part, when this particular piece is finalized, the intent would be for the architect to basically take the building and create a concept design, which would then be priced. We would have, they would have contractors review that and provide them with an estimated cost to construct what we think we need, at least at a concept level, so that when we go to the community and have a discussion with it about whether we want to move ahead with the project, we have some sense of what the real numbers are. We would also ask them, I have also asked them to, that is, the architects, to design and price a building from scratch. In other words, not trying to fit it into an already designed envelope, but to build that from scratch again, so that the community can understand it's this cost to do one thing, and it's this cost to do another thing, and how do you want to move ahead? So, that's the goal of the conversation this evening. The council has, I know, had some discussions about this in caucus, and we can talk about how you want to handle moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone wish, I guess I'll start it. First of all, there's no this is not a concern by the council that a fire station isn't needed, a new fire station isn't needed. I think when we first saw the draft, which was just before the weekend, there were some questions that popped out to us, and I think what we'd like to do is have a workshop with the various people on the fire task force and others who sort it out and see what we've got there and what we're planning on doing. This draft anticipates or is, is trying to predict what will happen twenty years down the road. And I'm, I'm not sure I can even figure out what's gonna happen by the weekend. But we would like to do that. We don't want this to linger, so we would, our intent would be to have a task force meeting of all the, the participants of interest. Have this accomplished, and if necessary, a redraft or an amendment to the draft that we received, and have this revoked at our next meeting.
To that end, because of course you and I talked about that, I've reached out to the architect and to the fire department. We'll try to move that ahead, and albeit we have a short week next week officially. We'll try and fit something in Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, so. The council members will be polled, and we'll see if we can get the body together, along with the representatives of the fire department and the fire commission and the architect. So far, I'm hearing from the non-council side of that conversation, pretty free schedules, so. We'll see what your calendars look like next week.
Is there any other comments or questions, or we have the opportunity? Buy lunch tonight. We will move that action and further discussion to the, our next regular meeting. Agenda item nine B, review and possible action on tax abatement for two oh one West High Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refuse myself in the discussion.
But the records show that this one act is recusing herself. Is there any, Scott, would you like to make a?
Sure, I'll take just a moment and provide the council with sort of the backdrop here. The Economic Development Commission last, late last summer, received a an application for a tax abatement under the town's tax abatement program for two oh one West High Street to support activities related to the construction of the third building on that property. For, by way of history, I'll just point out that the there was a tax abatement granted to this property for the construction of the earlier phases of this project. And it was considered by the commission at that time, recommended for approval and awarded by the Town Council, as I think that material was provided to the council later on, and as I believe also in the agenda packet online. The Economic Development Commission discussed this at a variety of meetings in the last, in the last several months with the developer of the, of the facility, West, West High Street Enterprises. I think that's the right name, West High Street, and discussed with that individual, the owner, and themselves about the impact of the process and the project, rather. Reviewed under the ordinance as it was revised in twenty twenty-three, the scoring sheet that it has provided, or that it had created, the Economic Development Commission had created, to try and get at the purposes of the ordinance and the types of developments that were to be supported by it. I'll remind everyone that the use of tax abatements is authorized under state statute. There are about a dozen different types of activities that can be supported under tax abatement law in the state, and the town of East Hampton has identified ten of those that it would support through this particular program. Basically, it removes the two residential-related items. So, in East Hampton, for this particular program, we focus on commercial, or I should perhaps more accurately say, non-residential support. Nevertheless, the, the Economic Development Commission did the review and determined through its process that the 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 development met what it would refer to as an average economic benefit to the town and the point range that it assigned when it went through the review. The interesting thing about this particular project is, as many of you know, it's a, it's a tenancy building that would be accommodating to multiple businesses, similar to the rest of the project that it sits in. And so the commission debated a lot on how it wanted to handle that, and in particular, how it would deal with the fact that there wasn't an identifiable single business that would be there. There wasn't an owner, so to speak, coming in and saying, I want to do this business in this building. So its process involved reviewing all of the activity that had been undertaken at that property since its inception, and how businesses moved in, grew, and changed, and moved out, whatever the case may be, in an effort to try and identify and establish for themselves what was likely to occur in the new building. And you see the result of that scoring in the packet. As a result of that scoring, the proposal from the, or the Economic Development Commission, as I said, did recommend approval, and the level at which the scoring comes out is eligible for either a three-year abatement of seventy percent of the value of the improvement. So all other, all of the other land value and the value of the other improvements on that property would remain fully taxed. Or the developer could choose five years at fifty percent abatement. So, that's up to the developer, and if the Town Council chooses to approve this, I'll work that out with the developer before he signs his agreement. I think those are my comments at this point. If there are questions, I'm certainly willing to answer them to the best of my ability, but I, we have provided, as I said, to the council and in the packet the material from the Economic Development Commission, as well as the information on how they score the properties, as well, information from the developer. It was included in the packet, but I sent it again to the council. Information from the applicant in how it meets the standards and how it would address the standards in the ordinance, and how it would intend to utilize this and how it brings benefit to the community. I also included in the material that was sented a little bit later and is in the packet just a bit of history at the request of one of the council members. We had, quickly, we were able to produce the seven-year history, or the, I guess it's eight years of, of material from abatements that have been given in the past. And so, from the grandest year of twenty seventeen, which would have been the tax year for twenty eighteen, is what we start with and we talk about the, the material. At that time, the active abatements were going to, basically abatements were going to uh basically this subdivision here or this uh development here rather than the town hall ended up being in. Uh, later on, there were developments, uh, or there were abatements given for uh the development of what is now the Coco Daycare Building and uh as I alluded to earlier, the West High Street. And then a redevelopment of uh the property at two sixty-five West High Global Storage. Uh, so over that timeframe, uh over those eight years, uh about six hundred or rather five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of taxes were abated and of course, what that means is they were spread elsewhere uh in the community. Those properties were all developed and all those businesses continue to function and flourish and provide support to the community.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the abatement? I will just uh comment in going through the existing ordinance and looking at some of the fine pieces. There's probably some things that could be improved upon. Uh, we're not going to address that with this current application, but we will take a look at that with the uh work we're going to be doing and the town will be doing P and Z particularly on the uh plan of conservation and development, which I believe will take, start this summer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And try to coordinate some various things. What is a benefit for the town? What is it a benefit for the town and uh what information may be required or necessary ongoing to justify or support the tax abatement? Is there any?
Um, I want to preface this with two things. One, I'm just sort of against the idea of tax abatements. Um, I, I'm glad that Mr. Johnson both spoke earlier and I tend to agree with both of you, depending Derek left. There's a, the, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development did a study that actually suggests this sort of abatement um should be ended statewide, so I, I think it's really in the town's best interest to take a really hard look at this regulation, this ordinance and figure out if this is meeting the needs of East Hampton today. And I, I tend to think not. That being said, the letter of the ordinance and the application, as it stands, um, I will be, I'll be supporting it. Uh, because it is what we have on the books today.
Right.
Further comments, any questions?
No, I'll, I'll follow up with that. Um. Yeah, I'll be supporting it as well because looking at the um abatement uh and the information um about the uh EDC's review, um, all of the application, all of the paperwork that came in uh looking at it within the confines of the uh ordinance that established it here, it certainly fits the bill. It certainly fits the bill, no two ways about that. I do have to disagree with our speakers this evening and with my uh comrade here uh next to me, I do believe quite frankly that uh abatements used well are a benefit to this town. One thing we have to remember when we look at this ordinance is that this doesn't take away any tax dollars that we're experiencing right now as a town. It takes away no tax dollars that we're experiencing right now. If in fact, this uh, this development or any commercial development didn't happen, we'd get no additional taxes from that anyway. What this does, this sets us up in, in a couple of years to get a tens of thousands more tax revenue than we would have otherwise gotten if we didn't have these businesses built in town. I wish, I wish we would have had more of these tax abatement application ten, twenty, thirty years ago because we'd be recouping the dollars right now. So uh, I'm a proponent of this. I think, not that any procedure can't be made better, but I'll tell you this, generally speaking, we will be recouping in a few years, tens of thousands of dollars in tax revenue annually that we would not have otherwise gotten if these developments, commercial expansions, developments don't happen. So uh I guess that all wraps it up to say, uh, I'm a yes vote.
I'm gonna say that was well said.
Well, thank you.
I, I can't even dovetail on top of that because you, you touched everything good.
Or any other comments? I would, I would make one final point that nothing occurs until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the town when building and project is completed according to the plan.
Right.
I'll allow a question because it's, you're the applicant, sir, Mr. Rand.
It's not a question, just a statement. Oh. Wayne Rand, uh, owner of uh West High Street LLC. Um, I would just like to say, um, thank you for listening to this application, but I would also like to say is that what we're doing up over there, we have roughly twenty-eight tenants over there now. Um, many of those tenants, um, I would say a good half of them worked out of their basements and garages and we and they could never get into a place like this uh for a thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars. It just was not possible. There was nothing available down. So we, we are able um with this tax abatement to lower their rent and we always push our expenses and if it's lower for us, it's lower for them for the first year or two. It costs a certain amount of money to build a building like this, like probably a million and a half dollars. Um, a developer needs to get like twelve dollars the square foot. This tax abatement, what it does for us is we can lower the taxes or rent for those people for a good, a year to a year and a half to two years and lower it to ten dollars a square foot and get them in there. Therefore, they get out of their basements, they're working, they're, you're taxing them on um their personal property. And we'll be there for the next, I know you're thinking, wow, two years, that's, you know, we're giving up taxes. It's a hundred-year building, it'll be there for the next ninety-eight years collecting revenue for the town. So thank you for listening.
Any further comments or questions? Is there?
I move the approval of the uh tax abatement.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion's adopted, six with one extension. Agenda item nine C, review and possible action regarding Police Department of Adams, General Order two point two. Goals and objectives and Police Department's citizen survey. They should be Karen back in here.
I'll invite, uh, don't sit down, Dennis, the chief. I'll invite the chief up and let him uh present these two items to you. Uh, good evening as always. Uh, thank you for allowing me to be here. Uh, tonight you have uh a one general order, goals and objectives, which is an existing general order that required us a slight modification to be in compliance with our accreditation standards. Um, it contains information that we already memorialize in writing through either budgets or our other uh general orders and uh such, but uh we to fulfill the standard that you see on there and read three point three point nine, it actually required us to uh bulletize it out. The second is the accreditation, post-accreditation process uh requires us every three years to uh put on our website and poll the community to basically see how we're doing. Um, we have, we've never done that before, uh, and whether it was for accreditation or not, I think it's a good idea to give us a benchmark on how we're doing and how we can improve because we're always looking to improve. So what you have before you is the required questions. Um, in addition to one last question uh that we put on there in consultation with the town manager is if someone wanted uh us to get back to them, specifically me to get back to them based upon the responses, because it is anonymous. Um, we put that item number six, last question number six, where they could actually fill out information if they wanted to have that one-on-one conversation with me. So basically, that is the six questions. Uh, the plan is to post it on our website, the, the police department's website on the sidebar on the left-hand side. And every three years, uh, we will just uh take the poll. I believe we're doing it through Survey Monkey. Yeah, uh, I learned a lot about Survey Monkey with this. Uh, I learned the town has a Survey Monkey thing, so it's a lot easier that way and it does, does the analytics, uh, which made my lieutenant very happy. He doesn't have to go through there and count them all, so. But anyway, that's uh, that's what you have before you tonight.
So are you going to do a presentation to the council so we can learn how to do this?
I, I would defer to Kathy on that. She's actually the one that's going to help us out with that.
Very good.
That's a very good move.
Yes.
Is there any comments or questions regarding the, the two uh general orders?
Um, I mean, I'm sorry if I missed it. Was um, what do you do with the results of this? Are you creating a report for the council or?
So we, we, we certainly, um, every three years, we're, we're required to go out and, and, and poll the community. Um, and when the third year comes up, where we're required to do it, um, we certainly are going to, to take a look at that. And when we do that three-year poll, I'd be more than happy to uh provide that to the council either through the town manager's report or an actual report of the findings and what, and what we've done to either, uh, you know, approve where there was a negative. There's not going to be any negatives, I know that for, but anyway, yeah. But if, if there are, what, what we're doing based upon the adjustment of the actual uh survey. I know a lot of the other town departments, the libraries, specifically parks and rec have all done surveys, so it, it's a good idea. It's a good idea to get the benchmarks. And like I say, it's anonymous. Um, unfortunately, there is not a way to restrict it from one IP address or the other. Um. But it, it's, it's kind of, it is what it is and it definitely, hopefully it'll give us a good benchmark.
Yeah, you want the motion? That's the question. Question first.
You said this is going to be on the website, police department website?
Yes.
What else is it going to be accessible and how are people going to be made aware that this survey exists?
So once we get it up on the website, uh, we're going to put it on our Facebook page and usually within a few minutes of us posting something on our Facebook page, it gets posted on Let's Talk East Hampton. Which
How are you going to account for all the trolls?
Um, you know, that's, that's, that's obviously, you know, a concern, um, because unfortunately, in, in the profession that I'm in, um, there's always going to be, you know, negativity, um, no matter what we do, however, um, it is what it is. And I think the town manager, he's the one that came up with question number six. Um, you know, that hopefully if people do that, they want to, want to get it, but for the most part, I think the townwide has been very satisfied with the results of surveys and everything. Um.
Can we add a question seven? That would be, have you committed a crime in the last thirty days? Because then you have the name and address.
Perhaps. Perhaps we would have the name, but um, you know, it's uh we, we struggle with what questions to ask and, you know, it's uh the ones you see before you, except number six are the specific ones from accreditation, so.
I just want to make sure that as many people see surveys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we will, we'll definitely get it out there and uh I think with this, because it's on a three-year cycle. Um, when we put out our, our weekly press release for the, the rests and things that we've done, uh, we'll put something in there specifically to the River East that the police department is doing this survey and maybe even put the link to it.
How long are you going to leave it?
We're gonna leave it up. We're gonna leave it up. Just leave it up and every, you know, and we constantly, if we start to see stuff.
Just every three years, you're gonna.
We're, we're just gonna leave it up on the website and, and just leave it up there, leave it open, leave it live, so if someone um Lieutenant Bergen routinely will go in there and just see how things are going because basically if we see something that is drastically being done wrong, I want to address that now. I don't want to wait three years from now. But we'll, we'll, we'll do a three-year cycle, um, but just continue to leave it up there. That's what we're gonna try. We, we may adjust that.
Sounds good to me. Other questions or comments? Jack?
Move to approve General Order two point two and the survey.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Not all entertaining vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eric seventy zero.
Thank you.
Agenda item ten, town manager report.
Uh, thank you. As always, uh, my report is, my written version of my report is in your packets and on the town's website for uh folks to look at and uh if uh if time proves to be what it is, I think that it's probably also up on uh Let's Talk East Hampton as well. Uh, it seems to find its way out there. Uh, which I think is a good thing, but uh, let me just mention two items that are uh included in there. Uh, one that I mentioned last week, but I want to bring it up again. Uh, first thing I'll just mention is a little bit of uh follow-up to the last council meeting or the last couple of council meetings at which you discussed uh the uh connection fees at the WPCA and the, and the plan uh that they have to increase those. Uh, you see in your packet or in the town manager's report, uh, a letter from the Public Utilities Administrator that outlines uh the WPC's PCA's response to that and a plan to revise uh the way they intended to change their fees. Uh, that's the result of not only the discussions that uh you and uh Mr. Barmesi from the commission had or from the agency had. Um. Uh, but also conversations that Tony Di Simone, uh, the Public Utilities Administrator and I had about how this might be done, how the impacts uh might be felt uh in the community and what are things that should be uh modified perhaps to ease the, ease the pain. One of the things that you had talked about was uh putting off uh phasing in uh the uh increases. So they've proposed two things in that regard. One, uh, moving the implementation date out several months to allow developers to adjust uh and perhaps make application under the old fee schedule. Uh, and um moved the rate down uh for that first implementation and then move it out and have increases planned in the future. Uh, additionally, they created a modified tiered system, so for buildings that are comprised of both commercial and residential, uh, they modified the schedule there to help improve uh how the costs break down and, and to really limit the cost on the residential side. Uh, and frankly, phase in again, as I said, uh, the cost on the commercial side of that. So they basically have taken a revised look at how they wanted to move forward with connection fees and how they wanted to uh implement those. Uh, they have re-advertised for a public hearing or will re-advertise for a public hearing on this again, so they basically are starting their process anew. Uh, and uh, that public hearing will occur on March four at their regular meeting uh of the WPCA out at the wastewater plant. So the public has another opportunity to look at those uh and provide comments uh to uh the commission or the agency as it moves ahead, the authority as it moves ahead. Certainly, the council can as well if it desires to give a further comment. Uh, the other thing I'll mention, and I, this is the item I mentioned last time, I think I told you uh verbally last time, I don't think it was in my report, but that the town uh will be receiving from the Secretary of the State uh what is referred to as the Democracy Cup uh for the fact that uh in the state of Connecticut, we had the highest percentage of registered voters come out and vote in the presidential. in the state of Connecticut, we had the highest percentage of registered voters come out and vote in the presidential election. It has always been, as I think I said last time, uh, amazing to me, the, uh, the choice that our residents make to come out and vote, especially in that particular case. Well over ninety percent of our registered voters and we have, uh, over nine thousand registered voters. So that's probably pretty close to a hundred percent of our eligible voters are registered voters, uh, and they come out and vote. So, uh, we're being recognized for that, uh, next week on the twentieth. And if I didn't say it last time, I am formally inviting all of you, town council and the public, uh, to attend that session, that presentation at three o'clock in the afternoon here in this room, uh, with the secretary of state and other individuals uh, who will sort of celebrate the fact that our community comes out and exercises its right to vote. So, um, next Thursday, Thursday, the twentieth of February here in this room at three o'clock in the afternoon, as they say, be there or be square.
Will there be cake?
I believe there will be. There will be some sort of sweet treat for those that come, uh, to enjoy as a reward.
I guess I'll be there.
Dean, you'll be there? We, now we have to decide whether we can convince the town council and chair to speak.
He won't turn that down.
I'm a politician.
Just make a erroneous statement about town history and he'll.
And he'll take it from there. Absolutely. So those are my, my, uh, verbal comments tonight. If there's questions, I'm certainly willing to answer them.
Um, I'd just like to thank Juliette and town staff and the planning and zoning commission again for reviewing those three point one regulations and getting those adopted. I know that was a lot of work and a lot of long hours in those meetings. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. That was, uh, an interesting process and I really think that, uh, Juliette's presence, uh, at the end there was really, really helpful and it was nice to have a new, new set of eyes on that and someone who's strong at crafting regulations. So she, I think eased them through the end.
Yeah, this new three point one really is really good. It's, it's a huge upgrade from what it was before.
I think it'll be good for us. Anything else? Thank you.
Not. Thank you. Agenda item eleven, appointments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, we're fortunate to have some, uh, appointments this, this evening to some commissions in town. So, um, I'll go ahead with those appointments. Um, I'll make them all at once. There are three. I, uh, move to appoint John Greeno to the clean energy task force for the, um, term ending, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-six. And, uh, I move to appoint Joni Maxwell to the Arts and Culture Commission for the full term ending December thirty-first, twenty-six as well. And, uh, move to appoint Rachel Watkins to the, uh, alternative, alternate, uh, term on Brownfields, uh, with the term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-nine.
I'll second those.
You, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any discussion, any questions? Not those in favor of accepting the nominations, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Adopted. Tax refunds.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return eighteen refunds totaling fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents to the rightful owners.
Is there a second?
Second. Uh, I would just ask one question, the town manager. There are two identical amounts in here for four thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars, eighty-two cents. Is that?
Frankly, I was just noticing that very same thing. Um, I, I have to assume it's correct. If it isn't, we promise we won't send eight, the fourteen thousand out. We'll send ten thousand and change, whatever that new math is.
Is there any particular reason there's so many this month? I mean, usually there's only a couple.
You're right. Uh, I sort of had the same reaction. I muttered under my breath. January was a collection month, so we would have had second payments of taxes coming in and so that's how you get that number of overpayments.
Thank you.
I'll confirm the four thousand, three hundred and whatever it was. Any further comments or discussion? Not those in favor of motion to return fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Agenda item thirteen, public remarks. Once again, one more opportunity to.
Leonard Johnson, tw- tw- twenty-one long cr- cr- crossing road. This is, uh, actually a question for Chief Wessner about, of the cer- survey. I'm aware, where that, um, pe- people my a- age at the senior s- center aren't all on the internet. They're, 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 they're not, not on so, so, social media. Is there, that there a way that they, that they could take, take the cer- cer- survey? They, because I think, I think if we depend on the computer and Facebook book, we, 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 we won't be get, getting valuable feedback back from the oldest pe- pe- people in our, um, our community. Thank you.
Sure, the chief will take that under advisement and.
It's a great idea. Um, I'll reach out to the senior center, uh, specifically. I'll see if there's not a way we can get them out. And then she somehow collects the surveys, seals the surveys up and disembacates. I didn't think of that. So thank you for that.
But Matt, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to make public remarks at this time? If not, item fourteen, communications, correspondence and announcements. You have those summaries in your packet. And here it is, number fifteen. Second, made seconded. Those in favor, aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all.